And welcome to our March Supervisor Meeting. This time I'll call the meeting to order. And I'll invite you to join the board as we stand and pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time we have the roll call.
Jerry Long.
Here.
Arthur Zerbi.
Here.
David Lineback.
Here.
Michael Reiner.
Elizabeth McGovern.
Here.
Carol Morton.
Okay, before we start our meeting, we always have a public comment session. Now tonight, we're gonna have two public hearings as they're advertised, and each public hearing will have its own public comment session. So if you're here tonight and wanna speak regarding the general agenda that's gonna follow, then this is the time to speak up. If you wanna, if you're here to speak up regarding any of the two public hearings that have been advertised, you can wait until I explain what the proposed action is on both of them, and then you'll be given a chance to have a public comment session at that time. So is there anyone who wants to speak in the general public session? I limit you to four minutes. I mean, I give you the opportunity to speak in the public hearing that's advertised. There'll be no limit to your times, but in this session, I limit you to four minutes each. Okay. See, and um, we'll continue on. We advertised, and Liz, do you wanna give any brief legal?
Sure.
That took place prior to this?
Yeah, we, uh, for both the ordinances, uh, the proposed rezoning ordinance and the proposed text amendment regarding kennels, we advertised twice in the newspaper as required by the MBC. We also sent it to be reviewed by our Township Planning Commission and also the Lancaster County Planning Commission, which they both reviewed and gave comments to the Board of Supervisors. And at this time, since everything procedurally was followed, the township can have a public hearing before considering enactment of the two proposed zoning amendments.
Okay.
Would you like, or you can explain?
I'll explain it. So, we are meeting tonight. This is the time that the board would take action, either to approve the rezoning or deny it. The proposed tonight is to rezone 23 parcels on the north side of Beaumontville. Presently, it's zoned residential medium, and it is to be rezoned to neighborhood commercial. If you can see on the map, right there, the red is neighborhood commercial. The white is currently orange, but it's white, uh, the orange, yeah, the white currently is orange. It's gonna be changed to red, proposed. This map up here is the future land use map that was adopted in 2008. And right there, it shows this being as future neighborhood commercial. The action tonight is basically extending, proposing to extend neighborhood commercial to match proposed growth map that was adopted back in 2008. What the neighborhood commercial is, the stated purpose of the neighborhood commercial is intended to preserve and enhance the sense of place which is experienced within the township, existing villages, through the blending of residential uses and commercial uses, which primarily function to serve the needs of residents within the villages. Non-residential uses are generally limited in size and intensity, to allow a mixture of uses and to prevent the establishment of intensive commercial uses, which would exceed the local orientation of the district. Residential uses are permitted within this district to allow for the local goods and services without the use of automobiles. On November 26th, 2018, the Brecknock Township Planning Commission made a recommendation to the Township Board of Supervisors to approve this proposed rezoning as presented. The county, in its consistency with comprehensive plan, says this proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the future land use and policy recommendations of places 2040. The comprehensive plan identifies the area in which the 23 subject parcels are located as a rural community charact- character zone, and the subject parcels as either core or other developed. Policy recommendations for both would include enhancement, infill, and reuse of existing structures. Rezoning the subject parcels would nurture, make, nurture this type of redevelopment and further the comprehensive plan's goal of creating great places, specifically by creating a mixture of uses and encourage community design that puts people first. The Lancaster Regional Comprehensive Plan use recommends that the area in which the subject lots are located function as village mixed use. Rezoning the 23 subject lots from residential medium to neighborhood commercial will facilitate, facilitate this type of land use. The proposed rezoning is also conducive to the plan's strategic strategy in accommodating growth in rural areas and near development infrastructure. So again, there's 23, okay, there. There's 23 individual lots located in the white. Tonight, we're considering rezoning them from residential medium to neighborhood commercial, which would be an extension of what currently is in Beaumontville. It would go from the center of, well, it'll continue out to Old School, Old School Road, Old, Old School Middle Road.
Lane, Main School Lane.
Old School Lane, okay. And then it would cross over the other side, identically matching what was proposed back in 2008 as the potential future land use map. So, at this time, we'll take questions. We'll take comments or statements or anything that you might wanna inquire concerning this proposed rezoning. We did have a public hearing with the planning commission. We did, I'm not aware of any objections to this to date. Seems to be a, simply a continuation of what's there. The same uses that are currently permitted within the main corridor of 625 is just extending it. I think it's about seven additional lots and then behind it, two lots, and then across
Is there any, anyone interested in doing something different? Was it a lot of need for now?
Yeah, we did have a landowner approach the board and request a highway for a neighborhood commercial use, and that's what triggered this thing. We considered his request. He was sent to the planning commission. They considered his request. They looked at the future land use map, and they came back with the recommendation to extend it into that area.
Is it some kind of business, or?
Well, it would, it's intended for a, a, a neighborhood commercial use. It could be like a doctor's office, or a lawyer's office, or it could be a salon. Basically, again, neighborhood commercial is for a mix of commercial and residential uses. You could put, you could have a small business storefront type thing, an apartment upstairs. That's, that would not be permitted in the art, the residential medium as it currently is. It is not intended to be an intensive commercial activity that require a lot of cars. It's not intended to be something that would require parking lot of 40 cars.
Does not park a convenience store?
Not, I, we look at the traffic that would involve. It's not intended to generate that type of traffic, but it is to serve the local community. I mean, if a convenience store is handy for people in the area, obviously, it wouldn't be the big Turkey Hill and Wawa, but it could be some type, I guess, even right now, the, the hotel in the, in the center of the town has a little bit of a convenience, they sell, what is a convenience store?
I'm hungry about gas pumps.
Oh, no. I, I, it wouldn't be for gas pumps.
What about the houses that have the signs in front of them?
They are the 23 parcels that are, that are considered for rezoning.
Okay, but does that mean that they use their home?
No. Residential use is permitted. This does not change, if you're, if anyone that's here that knows someone that lives just, I would say, south of them in, in Beaumontville, it's the same use as theirs. They didn't have to, they didn't have to move out of their homes or anything. It seems like, it might seem like a lot of parcels, but some of them are so small, they can't be used anyway. They're just gonna stay the way they are, unless it becomes a, something that just, you know, has one car at a time, or, or, you know, say if a lawyer moved in there and had an office there, or, um... And only a few of them are large enough to kind of like do anything with. But again, when we, when we rezone stuff, the easiest way is, is just expand the existing zoning district. So that's why this is simply an expansion of what's currently there, to, to create a highway, a highway commercial district out in the middle of nowhere. We just not recommend it, and that's not what we try to do. We try to just insulate them residential, commercial, mixed opportunities with what's, This is your time, because when you're done, then the board will deliberate and possibly make a decision.
I have a concern about runoff. I have, I have property that's two empty lots next to me, right next to me. Um, I'm the first house on right on Old School Lane, and I'm, I didn't go a week behind you, but when it rains, there's a drainage pond that's behind me that's not too great, and it's from a park there. And then, now that we have the other government up at the bow, after the rain, then, oh, wow, there's water coming down there, and I have, I have a little bridge across the creek, and it gets flooded with the rain and stuff. How is this gonna be for like paving and runoff and, you know, something built there, something new?
Well, anything that's built new nowadays has to address their runoff. They have to contain it and keep it on site. That's why you see the retention basins, you see infiltration systems put underneath the parking lot. In fact, I, you guys, I think you actually have to, you have to control more than what your actual runoff is, if you understand what I'm saying. You have to accommodate for not just your runoff, that, that your property creates, your parking lot in your, your home, your, your roof. You have to accommodate for additional 50 percent.
'Cause when the empty lot next to me, it's, it's like a swamp.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they would have to do a land development plan.
Yeah.
They would have to address zoning, stormwater, I don't know, not just ours. Yeah, please.
This will not affect your property like the turnpike's gonna someday. When the turnpike goes through with another lane, both sides, can you imagine the impervious surface and the amount of water that's gonna come through Beaumontville? I don't know what they're gonna do. I'm glad I won't be here.
Well, if you, if you read recently, the turnpike is so broke, I don't know.
Yeah, but, my, they're kind of going through lanes each way, and where's the runoff gonna go? Beaumontville gets more than their share of water to begin with, and it doesn't go under the road through that pipe work, the State Road 625. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like. You put another lane of water, dumped in them people yet. It, it's, it won't be nice. But the turnpike has a lot of power. They do a little bit what they want, so...
I was gonna share what some of the permitted uses are. Single-family detached dwellings, single-family semi-detached dwellings, apartment dwellings with the same structure in combination with the commercial use. Like I said, you could have a, you could have an office on the first floor, and you could have an apartment upstairs. Uh, beauty, our personal service shops, including shoe repair, tailor, dressmaker, barber, beauty shops, similar shops, provided that the gross area does not exceed 700 square Shops for the repair of small household appliances, shops which involve retail sale and, and the rental of goods. Now, there are some, some special exceptions that require to go before the zoning hearing board, like a bed and breakfast establishment, that would not be as permitted use, but if you met all the conditions. A bank, child daycare facility, emergency service facilities, farm produce mo- farm produce markets. All these would have to go, a hearing, you'd be notified, and so, again, some of these are so small that they're not even practical, but to include, to make it contiguous with the others, that's why, that's why it amounted to the number of parcels that it is.
Isn't there a flood zone back there too, like we all have? We all have a flood zone that we can't build on.
There's a flood zone that can't be built on?
In on that?
I, I would guess at the creek, there's gonna be some, some area that cannot be built on.
You're happy, 'cause we can't go on some parts.
Are you talking on the west side of 625? I think?
Uh, we're, we're on Old School Lane.
Okay, okay, okay.
Would that be low-income housing if something gets built?
No, we're not, I mean, the use don't change for what's currently there.
Okay.
And I would think that because the difference between residential medium and then neighborhood commercial is actually a relaxing of some of the restringence on, on your uses, which is catered to allow a little more of a village commercial use. What you're talking about, if it was low-income apartments, they can be done on the residential medium. They do not need to be done on, on neighborhood commercial. So that could be done now. Nothing else? Does the board have anything they wanna add?
Well, it's, it's set up that, it's to provide services to the public that can walk there.
Yeah.
Uh, one example would be, and he, would be Leon Fox.
He is in neighborhood commercial, yeah.
Yeah, and a, a use like that, provided the property's big enough, or a use like that, like Jerry just said, the chairman of the board. Some of those are too small. They'll never, they'll never be anything else than a residence. Nothing will change except for a use, and it's very limited to what can be used. The only other thing I wanna add is, if the zoning changed through the board's decision, your taxes will not change. It's, they're gonna stay the same, unless the use changes sometime, you know, somebody bought it. It will make certain properties worth a lot more, because say there's a doctor or dentist that wants a place, and it's suitable and big enough, the value of that place would be a lot more than what it is now for that person. And the person doesn't have to go out into an area and buy a larger tract to provide a facility for something like that. And then putting it to 700 square feet, the usage, 700 square feet ain't big. It's, it's not, this room is...
What, better than saying that I was saying this last time?
Well, 30 by 30, 900 of them. This is more than 700, this room.
22 that way. 22 by 32.
Okay, 700, I guess. It would be about the size of this room. And that would be it. But, other than that, and like you said, if it's something by special exception on the list, they'd have to go zoning hearing board, and there's where people have their real input, you know?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from our Township Planning Commission to rezone as presented, and the recommendation from Lancaster County Planning Commission to, that it is consistent with their future land use policies, and also they recommend the rezoning of the 28, 23 parcels from residential medium to neighborhood commercial.
I have a question before I second it.
Okay.
I noticed a couple people in the residence, in, in the tenants tonight that lives in that area. Is there anybody in here really opposed to this? You know, that's the most important part, 'cause, you know, you have to have your residents happy with, or satisfied with a move that's being made. But I was just wondering, is there anybody really opposed to it?
I guess my, my fear is that it won't be stuck to what it's supposed to be, and then the traffic coming in and out of our road is bad now, and the visibility, and, depending on what is in there, I mean, we don't need more crime, you know, in there. I mean, okay? I mean, we, we have to protect our own property.
Well, it shouldn't really affect the traffic, because these are all road fronted out front, you know?
Yeah, but what else?
The, the access to these properties, the majority of them are all out front.
So then, no, okay, so then you're telling, telling us that whatever bills there, they'll be getting in and off of 625?
Well, the only lot is the one in the corner, correct?
Well, there's, there, if I, if I'm correct, if you're off of School Road Lane, you're behind, you're one lot back.
No, they're back part of the...
As Mill Street, yeah.
We're behind Mill Street, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so you need to get in and out of there all the time.
Yeah, but they're within, they're within the section of 625, School Road and Mill Street, right?
Yeah, they live on...
No.
They live on...
They live further back.
They live behind, between Mill Street and the cul-de-sac. That's where they live. They live behind.
Okay, you're not, yours isn't being rezoned.
Yeah, they're not, no, no.
Okay, okay.
We're just concerned about other things.
Street parking, too.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need people parking, you know, on the street.
Well, they, any, any, any proposed change of use will require a land development plan, and they'll have to provide adequate off-street parking.
And the only lot that really could be utilized, anything, would be on the corner.
That's the prime lot that can be utilized, and that would, that would probably access 625, yeah. Okay, I had a motion.
I second it.
Okay, the motion was made and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion taken. Oh, you need an ordinance number for that?
Uh, 219.
Okay. Are you okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Other than the lot maybe on the corner, the rest of it, you won't really ever see really change, correct?
I don't suspect, I mean, we're, we're not, we seem to be busting at the gates with residential housing and apartments, but we do not seem to be a magnet for a lot of commercial activities, so, you know, there's a bank that just opened up at Weaver's Store, First Citizen Bank. We've been hearing talk about banks for years, and for some reason, they didn't come. I guess, I guess we don't have the money for them. I mean, it's just, we don't seem to be a, a magnet, I could say, for, for a lot of that type of stuff.
Well, we didn't have the lands, we don't have the spots for them either.
I mean, even, even a good restaurant, I think we could use a good restaurant, but that's my personal opinion, and we don't seem to...
There wouldn't be one there. I don't imagine.
It, it possibly could be a small takeout, I guess, maybe realistically. That concludes that public hearing. The other one that was advertised, you didn't even wanna add to this, or should I just continue on?
Go ahead.
Okay. The other one involves kennels, dog kennels. We've had a, a number of, in the Ag District, Ag 1, Ag 2, farmers that have had small kennels, and it seems like they had to go through a lot of extra regulations and stuff. And some of them would have kennels for two years and then find out it's more work than they anticipated, and they would quit. So, we, we looked at changing the description and the use to loosen up a little bit on the small kennels. So currently, our ordinance today, all kennels would be required to go before the zoning hearing board and have a hearing. What we've done is we've looked at the small kennels in the Ag 1, Ag 2, and Parus Rec, and we made them a permitted use up to a kennel class four. We're, we're saying that if you keep your kennel small, you won't have to go before the zoning hearing board, or you won't have to have a hearing. There is a whole list of performance requirements that you're gonna have to meet, and we stiffened them up a little bit with some of that language. But the biggest drift of this proposed change tonight in the, in the zoning ordinance is to basically allow the old kennels up to class four to be permitted as a right if they meet all the performance criteria. If it's larger than a class four, it's changed to become a conditional use. Now, again, that is putting a little more tighter control versus just as a special Now as a special exception, they go before the zoning hearing board, and the zoning hearing board would make a decision, and they would be granted or denied. Changing it to a conditional use means they have to come before the supervisors instead of the, instead of the zoning hearing board. The supervisors would then involve the planning commission, and ask the planning commission for their recommendations before the supervisors would make a decision on, on, on a kennel. It puts a little bit of an, an extra planning step in there for kennels class five and over. Also, if, if kennels cannot meet the increased setbacks that this ordinance has, they would have to also go, it'd be, it'd be granted as a conditional use, they have to come before the Board of Supervisors to get a variance or a waiver. And one of the, the, some of them, what them changes have done is, I thought I had it highlighted, but one of the things they've done is the outdoor, outdoor, outdoor walking area, exercise areas for kennels have to be, you know, like a stockade fence, it has to be totally screened. And if it's, if it's less than 300 feet from a, a neighboring residence, it has to be screened with a, a stockade fence and with a planted screen. Again, this is a little bit of an extra requirement to muffle sound, so that dogs are barking, it's, it's, it's muffled and it's not as, as irritating. Also, as permitted use, they have to be 1,000 feet from a residential district. Now, again, we're just trying to get, as the ones that are permitted as a right, we're just trying to get them a little more, you know, isolated. And again, it's for small, small kennels, and we're hoping that, you know, that... And, uh, again, it's for small, small kennels and we're hoping that, you know, that if they go to one increased of, of class five kennel, then they would have to basically, it'd require a conditional use, they'd have to get approval before the board of supervisors. So, what, what is a class four kennel? You asked, great question.
It don't mean anything to me.
It's, it's up to two hundred and fifty dogs in a calendar year.
Okay. That's also counting the breeding dogs?
Yeah, yeah, and, and what we've done is, in, in our new, a kennel can be a boarding kennel, a breeding kennel, um, um, all kennels, you know, we, we didn't break them apart. It's a kennel, it's, it houses dogs, it's a kennel. Now, also, the other condition, they all have to license through the state and, um, there, there is, they have to conform to all the state regulations. And the state monitors that, leases that, it's not the township's position to, um, to duplicate what the state currently does. The state does random inspections and, uh, they, they monitor the humidity conditions of the dogs. Are there any other questions? Other townships have been doing what we're proposing tonight, just simply to, uh, make it less complicated for someone who's more of a hobby, a dog raiser and the one that, we, we didn't want to permit as a right someone putting in a ten thousand dollar, or ten thousand dog kennel, you know, so we, we, we reached that class four and said that up till there, it's, it's still permitted. I mean, I mean, you can apply for conditional use and have that ten thousand dog kennel, but it would come before this board and everyone would have a chance to weigh in on that and, uh, I don't think that's going to happen in Brecknock Township. Anything else? Let me did what I did with the other, the planning commission also recommended that the kennel ordinance be adopted. The county said, uh, Brecknock Township is to be commended for a thoughtful update to the vision, for the provision of veterinarian facilities and kennels to its zoning ordinance. Consistently with the Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, didn't really address kennels, so they didn't have, um, uh, consistency with our municipal comprehensive plan, did not directly address, uh, veterinarian and kennel facilities, but the proposed amendment does promote the plan's agricultural resource strategy of enacting regulations to support diverse farm production, including provisions for on, on-farm businesses. So, that aspect of it was looked at, um, as supporting the Ags, um, agriculture, agriculture's resource strategy. Anything else you want to add, ask before the board deliberates and proposes to make a decision? Okay. Any comments?
The one thing to put in perspective for those in a thousand feet from a residential district is that if you can imagine a football field, that's three hundred, you're talking, and most of yous live in a residential area, you're talking three plus football fields, so it doesn't affect residential areas at all. And even from out in the agricultural areas where it's two hundred feet from all residents, that's two-thirds of a football field, that's quite a distance. But, uh, the state's tough, they, they step in, they'll stop in any time. And if them dogs are not the way they should be, the state's tough, they're tougher than we are. And dogs have to be cooled down, air-conditioned in the summer, they have to be heated in the winter.
I'm wondering if that thousand feet might be a bit of a stretch, how many properties can even have dogs?
Well, if you look at the map over there, I can't, I don't want to blind date, but the light green, the light green is all Ag, so, you know, only, we're just talking about the perimeter around the orange.
Yeah.
And now, it doesn't say they can't have a kennel within a thousand feet, they can, but they have to come before the board of supervisors, no matter what size it is.
So it would keep all kennels away from the town, residential?
Correct, as a permitted use, as a permitted right.
But they could still apply for a variance?
They, they would, they would come before this board and, and this board would ask the planning commission for their recommendations whether the kennel ship can be closer than one thousand feet.
And if they're coming in front of this board, it would have to be advert, notice would have to be posted and the residents would have a chance to come here and let you know how to deal, you know.
The thousand, the thousand linear feet from a resident is new, but it's something that because we were given it as a right, as a right, we wanted to, you know, it's a little bit like you give someone a right, someone's going to use it, so you kind of say, well, you can do it, but then don't do it more than this.
You know a thousand square feet from here, it takes you through there over to the corner of Weaver's Building.
It's from here to Goodyear. Not quite, but from here to Five Point Mine.
Well, it's, it's a quarter, it'd be less than a quarter of a mile. Again, we're, we're trying to allow flexibility, but yet not create problems. Well, if there's no other discussion, I'll make a recommendation that we support our planning commission and their recommendations to adopt these ordinance in the Lancaster counties. Encouragement and, and, uh, recommendation also that we would adopt these new kennel ordinance, does it have a number?
Two twenty dash two nineteen.
Ordinance number two twenty dash?
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen. I second it. Okay, we had the motion to adopt it and it was second, those in favor say aye.
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 Motion dismissed. Okay, that concludes the advertised, uh, public hearings. We will now proceed to our normal, regular monthly meeting and don't feel bad if you want to get up and leave. Appreciate you coming out for the public hearings and you're welcome to stay, but we won't feel bad if, uh... Next on our, our list is a guest. Uh, we have the Lake in the Woods. We had a guest that was planned to be here tonight and then she had an accident on the way to the airport. Lake in the Woods is in the process of expanding their campground and they've been working through a, a land development plan and the nature of it has, has generated a lot of review comments from our township engineer and they've been making a lot of corrections, but they're here tonight, they would have came tonight asking for a waiver request to proceed directly without preliminary plan to final plan and also, um, they want to, they want conditional preliminary plan approval, uh, contingent upon them satisfying all the comments outlined in the engineer's review letter dated and also meeting all the third-party, um, agencies that are, that are involved. This did go before the township planning commission and the township planning commission recommended that the board would approve the waiver request and the, um, approval with them satisfying the comments based on the township engineer's letter. That is the extent.
That is. And they, she had since emailed and said that they have no issues with Mike's review letter of February twenty-second and they plan to comply with everything.
Okay, well, if there's no discussion, I'll make that motion that we grant the waiver request from eighty-nine dash nineteen to proceed directly to final plan and, uh, the recommendation of conditional preliminary plan approval on the, um, project contingent upon the applicants satisfying all the comments outlined in the township engineer's letter.
I second it.
Motion was made in second, those in favor say aye.
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 Motion dismissed.
I have some questions for Liz.
Yes.
I would have liked if they would have been there because the access drive, it says on the plan how that they're closing it. Well, that was an access drive for, oh, Rufus and Old Stotter. And that was an access drive through the Boy Scout camp. That was an access drive into the quarry. I was wondering if they got a hold of these people since making another drive coming in from the west, Blacktop and Iran. And then I was wondering, ever since I was a little boy, I was told that access drive that stripped the land down through there was still needed to William Penn, how can they close something like that? That's what I was told.
I'd have to look into that issue, I was not aware of that. We weren't really involved in the planning review. Typically, we get involved with, you know, if there's sort of review and improvements agreement, et cetera, but we can look at that issue if the township wanted us to.
Well, um, Gene, do you remember if, um, there was any discussion about this access?
The access drive, you know that.
As far as I can recover, they're covered from the original driveway system through the campground that they created. They're not opening any new access drive as far as...
But didn't they, didn't they say they were going to provide a different access to the Boy Scout camp?
They're closing, up here you can see where they're closing this access right here.
I don't, I guess we would have had this same drawing, but I don't recall that being drawn.
And there's a...
Well, I don't, I don't think the Boy Scouts come off of, where is that road there?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think they go in off of Yellow Hill, do they?
That's their only access in.
I remember the discussion, they were, they were going to maintain an access to the Boy Scouts, but I thought that was being slightly changed.
I thought...
You think they were going to access somewhere over here?
That's, this shows a new macadam.
Yeah, new macadam around and the, and all the way around this way. That's the only thing I have in question is...
You certainly asked a question.
Closing that. And if you go back to that access off the Yellow Hill, past the Boy Scout camp, you'll come to the quarry, which there, I don't know if anybody's living there now, is a residence.
They could go through the quarry.
They'd go through the quarry, but there's the access and it says to be closed in the next page.
Listen to them drive it, I guess they're...
I hear you can read, closing it, closing it, into the Boy Scout camp.
They're limited to be removed.
These are the only questions I have.
Well, let's note that in the, in the...
Yep.
Have a mic follow up with that.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I, I don't know.
If it's illegal right of way, I can imagine they can close it without...
I didn't think that it belonged to any one parcel of land there. Just, just, that's what I was told ever since I was there.
I mean, that's true.
I said he passed away.
I don't know if you can get a quick, can you get a quick deed on something like that? Do you know?
You know, there's, they could possibly have some options there, you know, that they could, you know, close it possibly if it, there's other, you have to investigate as to what occurred during the history of this access. But I, I'm not, like I said, I don't know until we were looking into it. I mean, Mike might have, like Jerry said, asked Mike first and he need us to legally, you know, do a search, we could do that, but... I don't know what the language said with William Penn.
Well, that's the only what I was told when I remember, but still, it was the right of way in for actually four different problems.
Yeah.
One, the Boy Scout camp, it was the only right of way in.
Right.
The others had access from other ways.
I hear it says new entrance to be provided from the Caddam driveway.
Yeah.
Says existing Boy Scout entrance to be removed, new entrance to be provided from the Caddam driveway.
And I think Caddam driveway goes around this side of the...
Yes.
Yep.
So they're coming back in here, does that go to Yellow Hill Road?
Yeah.
Well, I remember them saying there was going to be another access to the Boy Scout camp, so they might be picking up the other ones.
That might go down it.
Yep.
I know the Boy Scout camp is landlocked within Lake of War.
Yes.
And I guess I'm going to see more northwest is that access. And I, I can't remember at that point if it was, uh, closed off, gone off on the...
No, Boy Scout camp is a lot, landlocked within Lake in the Woods right now after the sale and purchase of the parcel where this campground, the extensions were...
From what I understand, they own that land.
Yeah, they, well, it's been a while since the sale.
Correct. And since they bought that, it's been landlocked in, inside of their...
Well, it's been landlocked before with the private owners.
Correct.
But answer your question.
Yeah, let Mike look at it and make sure everything. I guess the Boy Scouts accepted it, you'd have to, I guess, the township.
Okay, our next guest is the, um, thirteen ninety-nine Billingsworth Road Land Development Plan. And, um, Mike Township Engineer provided a letter dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Do you have anything you want to add?
I don't know what's on the letter. I don't have her windbag here, so it's kind of quiet.
I'm looking through the engineer's report because, um, he mentioned that the action, uh, the R, R, R G, R G A S, investment, he's recommending that, uh, recommend an approval of waivers and conditional plan approval for the letter dated February twenty-sixth. approval per the letter dated February twenty-sixth. The Township Planning Commission approved that same letter with the, with the conditions per February, the letter of February twenty-sixth. There was, there is nine items that were drawn over. But Township engineer says that we can just approve the waivers and conditional plan based upon that letter dated twenty-sixth. Maybe you should, we should just go over them briefly. The, are you the same page, Emily?
Looking at the township Mike's letter.
Yeah. Okay, February twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah. The request from the requirement provider to recharge volume doing to soil limitations on the site. Is this where you're putting amended soils and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Recommend approval for the waiver request from nineteen, or ninety-three thirteen for the quality going to discharge at a minimum twenty-four hour time period. Do you want it longer or shorter? I don't know. I think it had to do with, the word just doesn't seep in as quick there and you put in amended soils, it's supposed to help to perforate, but at some point, I think it was, it was to allow to, a little longer than twenty-four hours. Waiver request to allow the bottom slope of the retention basin one percent instead of the two percent. Again, that just flattens it out a little bit. Yeah, yeah, let it try to seep in better. And then there was a recommendation to approve a waiver request to allow the side slopes of three to one, except four to one, instead of four to one. And the understanding was three to one is easy to mow and because of your space to fit it in. And then to allow the embankment along the back, I think it was, grading to two to one instead of three to one.
That's the most.
Yeah, to minimize disturbance of exist, existing vegetation that's there, there was a row of trees and stuff there. And then a waiver request to provide shoulder improvement from all the entire front, frontage of the property and it was like, they thought it was, didn't seem fair that you would improve shoulders if nothing else would be improved. I guess there was some condition that if, if the others are improved at some point, these were gonna do it then or something. And also to go from final plan and then from providing all adjacent features within two hundred feet of the track down, which on a single lot, some of the land development plan is generally a approved recommendation. Then need all the, approval based upon meeting all the comments in the letter. So.
You look confused.
Well, it doesn't necessarily all make a lot of sense to me. I've been getting an education in this process, but as long as I can get a permit, that's what I'm looking for.
Stormwater is getting tough everywhere.
Why didn't we get these ponds anywhere that are holding water like crazy? They all seem to be draining out of them.
Some are supposed to hold water.
Okay.
Set of traps.
Yeah.
And some are. So. Well, I'll refer to the items on the engineer's list and make the motion to approve Township engineers recommended, recommended items for action, approval of the waivers and conditional, conditional plan approval per letter, per letter dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
I second it.
Okay, the motion is made in second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'm an expediter of somebody that does stormwater, not just, somebody that has a backdoor, rooting there, start rooting it up, somebody that has a little bit of knowledge of what to do, it'd be a lot easier.
Well, I think they demonstrated to the township that about eight is the maximum number of apartments on one acre. Do you do parking, two parking spots for each?
We have two extra slots.
Plus two extra ones.
Yeah.
And then do you do your stormwater plus the fifty percent additional?
I mean, we have to put a, we have to put a retaining wall next to the driveway because we're, keep driveway flat, it had to be too high in there for the roof for slopes, so it's, I mean, it's, it's height.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our guests. Moving on to the minutes, minutes from the last month. Are there any additions and corrections to the minutes of February twelve?
I read the minutes, I didn't see anything wrong. I make a motion to accept them as they're written.
I second it.
Okay, the motion is made to approve the minutes without corrections. Second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the bills to be paid. Are there any questions, the bills as they're presented to be paid for the month of March? I, I had a question. What is, who is Marco?
That's what I was gonna ask.
That's Marco.
Marco, um, the copier was, was owned by the Phillips Group, who was bought out by Marco. That's all I know. So instead of seeing the Phillips Group every month, you'll now see Marco.
Another question, who is Ed Gaiman's Emergency Road Service?
That is, he's a, we had a truck breakdown in the middle of the road and he's a twenty-four hour emergency truck service, had to come out and fix the truck for us.
During the.
Don't want to say it's a.
Break when you're not using them.
Yeah. I know it was just a fan belt, but it's the darkest thing getting a belt somewhere with some of these trucks.
And where's Lee from?
Ed?
Back in Radron.
He's low.
Radron.
Is he, I don't know.
Not sure what that ruined name is.
I just, I just knew him, I used to hang out at, after the truck stop.
Okay, are there any other questions on the, on the bills? Is there a motion to?
I make a motion to pay the bills for the township for this month in the amount of one hundred, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
I second it.
Okay, the motion is made in second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
East Church Street, Stevens.
Okay, moving on to reports. We have the Road Master's Report. What are manhole protecting rings?
Oh, there's the thing that you buy that you can put around the manhole and you can heat it and fill it up so you don't catch blades on it.
Why wouldn't they be on home?
Because what happens is when the manholes are initially put in, the manholes are pretty near flush or recessed a little bit from the blacktop so you don't catch them. But as time goes, the road profile changes, some lift, some drop. And when they lift and they only stick up that far, they'll come along with their blades and catch them and, ah, you can, you'll knock a chunk out of the blade or you'll, oh boy, you'll bust, you'll bust the manhole ring or I've seen the manhole lids bust in half. You can miss your pile so bad you can't use it.
Snap the, guy hit one, he snapped the pile, he's right off the truck.
So how many did your, or how many did you store?
For some reason, this year, we had a ton of them shot. We need to do one in Andrew's Way. That was just done, you know?
It changes.
But that expensive, are these rings expensive?
I, we had, we had a box here, been a couple of years since we, we've had the box since I started at fourteen. And we just used it up and I asked the sewer authority for another box, they had one sitting over there. I, I don't know if they charged us for it.
Not yet anyway.
But I kind of doubt they will. I don't think, I think that they're fairly inexpensive. And it comes with multiple rings in each box.
And the rings are like a, they remind you of a hard plastic, but if you drop it, they'll break into pieces.
Yeah, they shatter.
And you, you line these up around, and then you heat it with the torch and it melts.
Oh, okay.
Right around.
Okay, I see for the, like, the third month in a row, you've, are talking about some extra help. And I know we didn't get a chance to talk to it about it last month. I guess from this side of the table yet, I, we need some more information on what you're anticipating or what the requirement is for your, your extra help. We, we raise taxes for more money on our roads and upgrade our trucks and stuff and before we go use that to hire a full-time person, I wanna make sure it's the right decision. I would like to see a list of the projects that you think you can accomplish with your three-man crew and the ones that you think that you possibly can't accomplish if you don't have this fourth person. You know, if, if we don't have enough funds to do the road projects, we basically pick and choose, we prioritize which ones to work on. If we don't have enough staff without hiring a fourth road crew guy full-time, then we'll have to help you prioritize them and say, well, you know, this is what you can get done, this is what we need to tell you to sub out, you know? So I'm really hesitant at this point to take on a, a fourth full-time road crew unless we really can justify it. Like I say, we, we struggle for funds, we have roads that we're not doing because we don't have the funds and to put funds into a fourth full-time employee is basically taking funds that could be going into the roads right now.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to, you know, you say you pull, put a list of jobs, that you think you can get them with a three-man crew versus getting them with extra, I mean, it's just gonna be a list of jobs and it's gonna be, well, here's what we have to do. Fourth man really helped out.
Well, that.
But, you know.
That's.
And it's the little things, you know, little things really add up, like a, a dromomel around here and everything, spring training, uh, going and pulling all the snow sticks we have around the township and fixing them and preparing them for next year, you know, keeping the trucks clean, cleaning up around the shop, little things like the part-timers did last year, you know, they just, they, totally, they add up to a ton of time. And, you know, it's, they just, it's gonna take more, more time than what you think and, you know, always have other little things pop.
I know. And like I say, from this side of the table, I'd like some more information to justify it, what the impact will be, because I'm looking at that, taking money that could be going into roads and.
You just mentioned what part-timers was doing. With a part-timer from spring to fall.
Yeah, anything's gonna help, but.
Because I had a part-timer.
The only thing, you're not always gonna get part-timers like we had last year where you can tell them what to do and you can trust them to be on their end and you don't have to babysit, you know, all, you know, dependents. It's so, and you get, you know, if, if we hire a part-timer that needs constantly babysit, well, he's a hindrance, he's not helping. Because then I, somebody or me or one of the road crew members has always gotta be with him because he doesn't know what to do. So it's just, you know, we were lucky last year, you know, wishing we had them again, but we don't, so, you know, I mean, I, I know, had some community services workers in here already that they might as well not have been here.
Don't you use them?
Well, we have had them for a while.
Not like I used them.
We haven't had any for a very long time. I had one call and he didn't have the proper paperwork, so.
Yeah, there was one that he was a monitor.
Yeah.
I couldn't tell you how many I used.
But, I mean, it's just, anything's gotta help, but.
I had some community service people that were terrific workers.
Yeah.
Oh, and then I had some, I told them just to go out there by the pond and talk on your telephone on the floor, because they were not doing anything anyway.
How much of your time you think you're spending in, with the parks?
With the park?
The farmhouse, the parks, and even cutting mulch and grass and stuff around.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of time that can be spent over there, there's a lot of time that can't be spent. It's, it, I mean, right now, how much time are we spending over there, over the summer? Once Gary and, Gary and Pete come back, you know, Pete probably won't spend anywhere than five percent of our time over there, it's hardly any at all, once they come back and start doing maintenance and stuff. But over the winter here, we're doing different stuff over there, checking the trash once in a while and everything and just checking to make sure that the trees are out and trails and everything else, but it's, I mean, it's not the.
How much paperwork do you have to do with the parks, like getting numbers for projects?
Well, that's, I mean, I, I do a lot, is I get estimates for all the projects that wanna be done over there and, and meet with contractors and, you know, always meet with three or four different ones and then, then it gets presented to people and they say, well, we wanna change this, and then I talk to the contractors again and, you know, different things like that and then got my MS four reporting I gotta keep, keep up with and.
But that kind of work is pretty near over now with the contractors over there.
Oh, they're over there, yeah, they are. Well, some of, there's still some stuff.
I would talk mostly about in the park, you get in the, a lot of paperwork stuff in the parks that are.
Not in the parks necessarily, no.
The trash should be hauled by Gary.
Yeah, trash.
In the winter, in the winter time, they do that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, give it some thought, I'm just saying, like I said, from this side of the table, I've seen enough to justify taking money from road projects.
Yeah, and one, one big help of a fourth guy would be too, is it's safety on the road, you know, it's three guys working on the road, a lot of times you just have two flaggers, which literally means you have one guy working, one guy working.
Have you ever used Gary?
Is he certified anymore?
He's not, yeah, he hasn't been, but we haven't used Gary or Pete for, well, I had Pete help us last year with some stuff and everything, but.
Because Gary, I used to say to him, what are you doing tomorrow? Well, I was planning maybe to do this or that, said, no, you're going with us. He, he went along with the road crew, sometimes he didn't like it, but he went.
Yeah.
I used him.
I guess it seems sometimes crews are just a little more efficient if they're a little short on labor. Sometimes you send an extra guy along out of the crew and they do the exact same thing in the same amount of time because they'll make the time fit the, the job and so I, we're not, I'm just saying, we don't have a tree growing, growing funds, I haven't found a tree in Brecknoff that, that grows money and we're, and we, we're fighting funds for, for needed projects and I just wanna make sure that this isn't taken away from something else that's, that's more important. So if you can provide more information, what projects you have besides mowing potholes and signage for the summer. And maybe, maybe we need to ask, like, you know, some of them have to hold off or we have to sub them out.
I had a fourth person at a, at times.
Yeah.
But we built that cylinder shade. We did the pavilions in the park and we did the bridge, stone bridge. And there was projects that was planned that was much larger, you know? That's the kind of thing I think Jerry might be looking for, do you have any big projects in the. Do you have any big projects in the planning other than mowing, weed eating, you know? And just the normal things that a township group would do. And then fixing signage, that's important, keep the signage up. Because that can get you in trouble if something's down and if an accident happens. But I think what you're looking for is the bigger jobs. Does he plan on anything?
We, we have a fixed amount of revenue. We have so much we're trying to put in roads. We contribute to our first responders. And I just wanna make sure that we're not robbing from other projects. Add a fourth person if we can possibly get by with where you're at.
Yeah, I mean, it's just. Every million, one thing.
Give it some thought.
It's, it doesn't matter how hard you try. I guarantee you, you're never gonna have the township roads in one hundred percent.
Either with thick skies.
The what?
Either with thick skies.
Well, you name the road and I can tell you what needs done on it. Every road needs some kind of work. And you'll never get it all done. As soon as you get done with one, uh, there's something else.
Well, there's something, yeah.
Doesn't end.
Then all summer ditching is, and then all summer going major there. So, I mean, it's, I can choose.
I'm, I'm hoping that this summer isn't as wet as last summer. So, the grass isn't growing as much and you can, you don't spend as much time mowing. And you can, um, you know, you have your resources. I don't wanna base your resources on the most, the wettest summer of record and the amount of, of work that that created. Cause you had washouts, you had, uh, trees down, you had all kinds of stuff. So, yeah, truck, if you, I, 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 I'm just saying at this point, I, we need more definite information on exactly how that's gonna be used so we can decide how we're gonna fund it.
I, right now, can see a part-timer. Part-timer.
I'm not big on part-timers. It's just like Andy said, it's till the time you get them, that you can let them alone by themselves. They're gone for the summer and then next year you go through it again.
Well, if you put them doing something and you see it's not done, you get rid of them.
Okay, can we move on to the park and rec overlay of the lower five hundred feet of Blue Baker Lane? We talked about this two months ago. We talked about overlay in.
Yeah.
Blue Baker Park. And you got.
Yeah, I guess we had, yeah.
Yeah. And you got proposals.
I requested three and I only got two. And, uh, like, the sole purpose of this overlay is just to raise that lower section of the road up.
Well, plus the road is breaking up.
It is breaking up. And it's just a little chip down there that was never paved before since, well, whenever it was done in ninety, ninety-seven or whatever. But it's this, it's not just, not just this year. It's every year, you know, it constantly floods down in that area. And we cleaned the edges, tried to keep it clean. Well, two, three floods later, everything just silts back up again. And it's this losing battle. So, we thought, well, instead of trying to cut the sides down, let's try and raise the road up so we can get the water to quit from laying on the road so much.
Now, last month, we approved the overlay of five hundred feet.
Or, no, that was the park and rec board.
Oh, park, okay.
Yeah, this went before the park and rec and this is their recommendation to use.
How long is the, uh, park street? If a thousand feet, ten's is from here up to.
It's, uh, I have to look it up. I, I wanna say it's water.
Does it go from, um, down at the bottom all the way up to Eagle's Nest or?
Yeah, it goes all the way around.
Are we talking the whole way around?
The whole way around. Yeah, from Long Lane to Long Lane.
Okay. What about into the, uh?
No.
One ballpark?
No.
So, we have two bids. Hackman paving is nineteen thousand. And lines and holds is seventeen, almost eighteen thousand.
It's, uh, sorry, it's, uh, two thousand one hundred and twelve feet.
And it's three, it's three inches from the lower up. And then it's two inches, uh, you have square yards. You don't know how many feet or do I see?
Two hundred fifty feet.
Of each?
Each, yeah. Two hundred fifty feet of three-inch relay and then I'll, and then I'll make it down to, uh, two inches. Cause the road does, once you pack, get past that first two hundred fifty feet, the road starts to climb uphill again and.
Well, I've used lines and holds. These seem to be a record for them. Is there any discussion on this? Do we wanna write directions? Would that come out of the park?
Yeah. Yeah, it, yeah, it doesn't have to come out of the park, if you will. Even though it is park, it could come out of.
Township road.
Yes, it is a township road.
It is, uh, lines and holds is seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars for five hundred lineal foot of Blue Baker Lane which runs through the park. You wanna see it down there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Wanna make a motion?
I've seen a question before, like, why does it have this square yards? Uh, it says one thousand one hundred sixty-six square yards for the cheaper bid. And then this has one thousand two hundred twenty square yards.
I see the, the, um, Hackman says one thousand two hundred twenty.
Yeah, I was just concerned.
Oh, makes it one thousand one hundred sixty-six. What is that, a difference of forty, sixty, sixty square yards?
That's not, it's not a huge difference.
Did, um? I don't know.
They would not measure them.
Yeah, they would not, they were out measuring themselves.
Bring it to your attention before you.
One guy could have measured it a little differently. We had the same situation when they were looking at paving on the parking lots. The one contractor's is like a hundred square yards higher. And I asked him to come back and remeasure. And he remeasured it and said, no, we're still calling it the same thing.
Six sixty-four.
It looks, it looks like the three-inch was measured different. The three-inch, one says six hundred sixty-four square yards and the other one says six hundred and ten.
It's all on the three-inch.
Which could be in the entrance, depending how they measure the entrance or the radius around.
The other one is exactly the same, the two-inch.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, make a motion that we use lines and hold at the cost of seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars to overlay the entrance, the five hundred feet as presented.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion to go with lines and holds. Second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, this, um, Black Creek Restoration Project. I'm trying to understand exactly what this is. And maybe, um, maybe you need to get some, maybe we need more information. I know it's a grant. But I'm trying to understand exactly what the plans are and what the scope of work is. Is there any way you can get more information on this?
Everything that I have given is, is there, for me, um, I, what, what do you?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to know what's going on and I, 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 I don't know what fifty thousand is being going for.
Well, here, here's the thing. I see in here, they're gonna take away the stowed gabions.
Yeah, that's, that old stowed gabion.
But there's no plan what's gonna happen after that.
There was a picture that has a.
Yeah, but the picture doesn't tell us.
No, there should be another picture of that.
Well, there's two pictures.
Uh, that one there has what they're gonna do.
Well, what are these yellow things?
They're, they're rock cross veins. If you look right here, they're gonna put in rock cross veins. These are the yellow things.
And what do they do?
They're, they're basically rock dams is what they are. They're gonna put in large boulders and, uh, create really good fish habitat.
Permanent.
Permanent, yes, permanent. It's, it's gonna make the, this is gonna make the water flow, you know, and then drop down and create a, a nice fishing hole for fish to swim in.
Ah, is this gonna increase the water level behind the dam?
It's not gonna change, it's not gonna increase the water level at all. It'll be just, it's not gonna be like a dam dam like you're thinking it's.
So, it's only gonna create a hole below the dam?
Right.
Not above?
Right.
Then where's the fissure rammer going?
Still gonna be there. I mean, there'd be a hole here and there's one here. This is where, I mean, this is from the bridge.
Okay. So, there's a hole here.
Yeah.
And there'll be a hole there.
Yeah, and then you have your, then you have your mudsills, which is where they stick those logs into the bank and stuff. And, uh, and then there's rock or, log or rock veins sticking out here to keep the banks from eroding and.
But the way we had it with the gabions.
Yeah.
We flooded everything back and up under the bridge.
Right.
We needed all that room for these trout. We just didn't need two holes. There's a lot of children that come to this fissure rammer.
I understand that, but I'm telling you right now, it's, this, I mean, the fishing game's involved with this, the conservation district. There's, there's a lot of people involved with this and, and it's just, it's gonna improve the trout waters there. Faster flowing water. Trout like colder water. They like faster flowing and they'll be more.
If it doesn't raise the water level here and here and these holes, I'm making sure they're gonna be able to get around these holes to fish.
Well, that's not gonna be the only places that fish are gonna stay.
Well, they'll stay in the deeper part.
Well, there'll be, there'll be spots along these mudsills where these things come out.
Boy, I'd like to see a plan. Does this water level drop then here?
I would assume, once that one gabion's taken out, the water level probably will drop.
Then the fishing dock will have really no purpose anymore. Well, it should, it won't drop that awful much, I don't think. I'd like to see a plan of this thing.
Well, I think too, um, I'm used to seeing more details. Uh, it just seems that there's got, there's gotta be a lot of something going on for fifty thousand.
Well, if there's a hole here and a hole here, the amount of children that come to this is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Your, your children, all these children, unless.
They have rock clusters here the fish can hide in and here. Trout don't need very deep water to survive and live.
Yeah, but they need water that's deep enough to keep cool because a trout is totally a warm water fish. And they can't survive long in warm water.
Right. And what you guys locked this water up here, which you slowed the flow.
Right.
Which is worse for trout habitat. They like fast flowing water.
Well, they live.
Well, I, I guess, um, I'd like to see details on what this, um, rock cross vein is. There's got, I mean, how do they bid something out and get pricing on, on just this? Um, what's the scope of work that, that we're expecting? What's the length of the project? Um, is there any way you can get just a little more information on this?
I, I can ask, um.
I mean, I feel like we're accepting something and we're not really quite sure what, what we're accepting. And I, I really don't like that.
Okay.
Tell them the board would like to know the details and what's, what's actually.
Yeah, I'll ask them.
And do they bid this out then or how they, where?
Yeah, they'll take care of everything.
Where do they come up with the, uh, the grant money, the specific grant money?
It's from, uh, uh, it was going on to the Elcon.
Yeah, what is Elcon?
Exlon.
Exlon.
What is Exlon?
I, I didn't ask. I don't know.
Okay.
I think they were gonna give us fifty thousand.
Okay. A lot of time when you receive grant money, there's conditions with it.
The, the one condition that we have is that we have to maintain the trees for a year after they're planted. And the jobs don't.
That's the only condition they put on you. Because I know there was.
Yeah, Matt called, he did say that in his email, that the only thing that we would have to do is, yeah.
The only other thing I have to question is, you had the township solicitor draw up an agreement. You have a new letter here.
Yeah.
Who authorized that?
As I did.
That's a board action. That's expenditure of tax dollars. You, you can't be doing that. You can't be authorizing an engineer or the solicitor because those are tax dollars. That could get you in a lot of trouble, you know? That has to come from the board for us to approve to use a solicitor for the expenditure of tax dollars. Right?
Yes. We assumed, well, I think I, we had talked to Jerry, we sent him an email. Because you received the grant and we weren't here the year prior or whenever, we had thought that this was already approved by the board. And that they, uh, authorization just to prepare the access ease and it was just a formality. So, I apologize for that, but that was what we had.
And he, he probably didn't realize either. Because even me, if I'd want something done, I can't call up Liz and say, hey, you do this. It has to be a board action. I can't, I can't do anything on my own. And Jerry, you don't have the right to either unless it, Carol would hold the board ahead of time to do so. But just for something for the future, you know?
Okay. Um, we need to, uh, we need to authorize the, um, the bids for Oakland Drive.
Yes, you need to award it to the low bidder on that sheet I gave you.
Okay, the board has, um, three bids to put the wearing coat on Oakland Drive. Across the one point four miles. Uh, we have the low bid of a hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred. We had a bid of a hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty. And we had a bid of a hundred ninety thousand, which I find interesting that.
We did too.
Two are very close and one is, uh, higher. So, the low bid is H and K Group. And this was budgeted to be done this, this summer. Do we have any questions on this?
Well, the pay supply, where are they from?
Yeah, that's because.
Manhams.
Yeah.
Where?
Manhams.
Manhams.
Yeah, this didn't make a big difference in the price.
Best ones.
To move the equipment and everything. If we were probably right next to Mannheim, it could be the low bidder and then ours would be the high ones.
These bids were, I mean, the specs were prepared by the township engineer. I mean, they all bid exactly the same thing. Yeah, because they could have won their own bid for them, I mean, our bid for them. So, is there any, uh, motion to proceed with this?
Let me make a motion that we accept bid from H K Group, amount of a hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred.
Okay, we have a motion to award the bid to H and K Group. Is there a second? I second. Okay, the motion was made. Second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now, I, you still, um, under Packet, can you keep getting this bridge, is there a bridge we want?
Last, last month, Andy wasn't here and you said you didn't really wanna talk about it until Andy was here, so I put it back in. Is there signage or anything that needs to be posted that, no?
He said we could increase it before I spent the money for new signs.
But there's, this, this is the one where they're weld gus, who's gonna weld the gus?
Well, I gotta find an outside contractor.
John, the guy on, uh, camera on the drive.
Lipinski.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know John?
I do know John, yeah.
Do you wanna talk to him?
Should I get like three different estimates for that or just off the ground?
If it's, um, if this is just a couple of days' work.
You don't have to get three words?
What's the limit though?
It's, uh, I, I believe it's over ten. Let me just check.
Ten.
I think it's three.
I think I just changed it recently, too. Let me just check. Pretty sure it's ten.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is ten.
I mean, he comes to mind for me. Do you know anyone that?
That's the guy I would go to. He'll work with him if he's good.
Yeah, ten, in excess of ten. You have to get three quotes, written or telephoned.
Okay, it's under ten, you can, okay, is it appropriate?
We will have to present it first, you don't want us to do it.
Well, give him a quote, you get Carol, I think the board should look at it. Okay.
Do you have the health of direction, I just can tell him what he wants to do.
I think so, yeah, it's a. I think it said in the inspection what they recommended that you do. That's what I'm gonna give him.
Yeah. Okay, I guess moving on to the engineers' report. On page four, we covered number six and seven. So the only items requiring action per the engineer's recommendations are one through five. Do you have any questions on one through five? You ready?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the action on Randall L Weaver, memorandum of understanding for a stormwater agreement in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. To Minnick Bernardo, stormwater management, finance, security, in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Aaron Hoover, land development memorandum of understanding. The thirteen forty-one hilltop road lot add-on plan memorandum of understanding. And Robert and Deborah Fuchs, a waiver to utilize small project application and to accept the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, we got a motion to accept the township engineers' recommended action and it was second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, you have your, uh, the SEO's report, you have the zoning officer's report. And, um, I guess the zoning officer is out of town. Enjoying the warm weather.
One question, he, uh, I just wanna make sure I'm correct on this. He asked us, said that we could remove the signs after this meeting tonight and the, the properties, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, any discussion on those zoning officers and SEO? Okay, solicitor, do you have anything?
Just the fact that we did look into that zoning setback issue on Maple Ridge North that Levi had asked our opinion on and we agree, we agree with Levi's opinion on that. And we will notify the solicitor, the attorney, Dan Becker, who represents the developer, that we do agree with the zoning officer's interpretation.
Can we comment on it all?
Yes.
I, I read Levi's interpretation. I, I agree with his outcome. They contested then and said that the house across the street shouldn't apply. And they may have a point to that. But I think that a corner lot should not apply to that exception because it does not have. If they're gonna say the house across the street, which I agree is a stretch to call it, an adjoining property, likewise then that, that their, their, their request is based upon it's gonna be a corner lot. There will be no other, there'll only be one adjoining property. So I think some of the reasons you can, uh, concur with Levi's interpretation in addition to that is there's only one adjoining property. There's, you know, he, he like, he said, they're, they're asking to move a house closer to the road.
Which is a road that they created.
No, not a mountain road, no.
Oh, I thought there was a, there was a road that they actually created through the development. Okay, so.
You know what we're talking about. They wanna put another dwellings on, right on the corner. And they're trying to use it as a condition that if you have houses that are non-conforming closer to the road, you can match that. If the adjoining ones are non-conforming. But there is not adjoining ones. There's only one that's, and so they're supposed to take the average. They wanna take the average of that one and then some other, further, further away which are not adjoining.
But isn't the one across the street that they want, that Levi's looking at?
That you compared it to.
Part of the old development, part of their development.
Yes, yes.
So another conclusion that we're, you know, because they're eventually going to annex this lot to that lot, it is, it should be considered an adjacent home because it's part of the, it's going to be part of the development.
Yeah, but their, their, their response to contest Levi's interpretation was it doesn't apply across, across the street.
I understand that, but I, I think they're forgetting that they will need to apply not only for conditional use for the, the new lot, but also for the old, that they had a special exception that will have to come into a conditional use because it's now going to be all one planned development. So I think you have to look across the street if you wanna line those houses up to be part of one planned development. But I understand what you're saying as far as the corner lot. We can also indicate that. Yeah, that's a good point that you raised.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the reports.
I make a motion that we approve the roadmaster engineer SEO exony as presented.
I second it.
Okay, the motion was made to approve the reports and it was second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, um, you have the park and rec minutes in your pack and they also, they want to finalize our action on their Easter egg hunt this week. We just need to verify, make it proactive.
Looking for an expenditure of up to five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Out of their.
Yeah, that's correct. Oh, sorry, no more than five hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, I have a question. Would they had to come, cause if they'd have kept it lower, then you might leave a.
No, it's just really just.
Didn't let us know what to do.
Exactly, yeah. Just kinda just makes it official, that's all. But no, you're right. It was five hundred dollars.
That's if they don't get any donations.
That, yeah, it depends on how much, and we are getting donations already.
Okay, so it's not to exceed that.
Right, yeah.
I'm making a motion that we approve the monies there, not to exceed no more than five hundred and fifty dollars for the Easter egg hunt.
I second it.
Okay, we had a motion that was second, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now, you have under agenda the Act five thirty-seven special study, but.
Well, we really didn't meet with them yet, so.
Okay, okay.
That meeting's not till next week, so I'm just keeping it on every month so that we do not forget to get updates.
Okay, moving on to, uh, new business. We, um, we have, um, actually I received this because I attended one of these, um, DC, EC, Department of Community Economic Development workshops. And there's one being proposed in Reading. And I forwarded this to Carol and asked her to make it available to the zoning hearing board. And that I would make a motion that township would cover the fifty dollar cost of the registration fee and reimburse them for travel expenses because, and I saw all three of them have responded. And I'm very pleased that all three have responded because we point board members to serve volunteer positions and sometimes we, uh, don't have the means to provide training for this. So if there's any questions about this before I make a motion, um, I'm sure I attended this one years ago and they're all generally good. Um, so I guess I would make a motion that we would, like, say that the township would cover the cost of the fifty dollar registration fee. And I would, I mean, I'm really thrilled all three are gone and I would also, um, reimburse them twenty-five dollars for travel expenses. Basically to match what we do for our board members and other, other, um, that take the evening and serve the community. Because all three signed up, I wonder if we should extend it and give Levi the opportunity to, to join and if it's something that you'd wanna go to be.
No one in answer in high knowledge.
No, I would just, my motion would be that we would, uh, cover the fifty dollar registration fee and the twenty-five dollar reimbursement for travel expenses for the three board members and, and make it available to Levi and a supervisor if they want to, uh, to go.
I'm just curious, what day is that?
May seventh, right there.
What, what day of the week?
Oh.
I'm just curious. A Tuesday?
Yeah.
Oh, he's got the calendar.
Oh, yeah, duh.
Yeah.
First Tuesday of the month.
Yeah.
I didn't even think about it.
You can read it from here.
Oh, I got a translator halfway in between.
Okay, I made a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, the motion was made second. Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, the last item on the list is, um, the, uh, the fire company, um, each year they have a, an annual membership appreciation banquet for all their, uh, members. And we get invited to it every year. And, um, I've gone to most of them and I always think it's a good thing. We have not participated in helping, in partnering with their, them in their banquet. We do give, uh, our, our donation for capital expenditure, but that kinda just goes in their bank account and we use it for, for equipment stuff. I, I came out there, uh, uh, from attending their appreciation banquet and thinking that, you know, we, we as a township do a picnic in the park for our board members, that, you know, our volunteer members. And we never do anything like that for the fire company and the ambulance association. Um, and I wondered if this could be a token of partnering with them to pay a portion of their, um, banquet, not to exceed what we typically do for our own board members. And that basically given with the intention of being used for their banquet. And hopefully they would acknowledge that at their banquet so when their members and spouses are there, they know that we are participating in their banquet and, um, they're tasting what we, you know, they're, you know, it's more of a personal, uh, contribution to them. The state, I guess a couple of years ago, the state had passed a, a bill that would allow us to set up a program and give fire comp, our first responders a discount on their property real estate tax. But I think it was up to fifty percent. Well, in our township, it wasn't that much, fifty percent on your municipal real estate tax. The average household is, it would be like twenty-five dollars. And it was a lot of paperwork to qualify for that. You had to document. Did that be a member that had participated in X number of, of fire company calls? And it just seemed like it was, it was a, a very complicated way. But it wasn't meant to be something that you could physically offer your first responders that jingled in their pocket. I think that if we participate and help them with their member appreciation banquet and they acknowledge it, it would mean more to them. And I could, again, I would not want it to exceed what we typically do for our, um, township boards when we do our picnic. And talking to Carol, um, I think we figured we do about a thousand dollars of catering service. So I would like to entertain the idea that we might, um, partner with them and give them a donation that would, would be just for their membership banquet, not to exceed a thousand dollars per organization. And maybe, maybe just, maybe they'd rather just see five hundred dollars. I, I don't know. What are your thoughts?
I myself don't mind if, if you do it for the fire company. I'm not a hundred percent sold on doing it for the ambulance association. I'll tell you why. And they're, they're, we need them, don't get me wrong. We are responsible for fire protection. To my knowledge, we're not responsible, am I correct, for ambulance?
You can make donations, but no, it's more fire and police.
Right. We're not responsible for ambulance. Our fire companies, they're pushed the limits with the monies they get, you know. Our ambulance, they know how to charge. There's no doubt about that. They're not cut short. We already give them fifteen thousand a year, which should more, they ought to be thankful for that. We, we don't really have to give them anything. And that's one thing I always considered when we gave them the fifteen thousand, that part of that money would be used for their bank. So that's, I'm sorry that just the way I feel. We're giving money to them that we would not have to give fifteen thousand every year. Fire company, we're responsible for.
I guess the, the fire company don't have to raise their own funds as much as the fire companies do.
You mean the ambulance?
Or the ambulance.
To some degree they do, but they do have billable. But, but anybody who is a member, if your insurance doesn't pay for it, they don't try to do the rest.
Well, if you're a member and you have insurance, insurance is gonna pay for it anyway.
But what if, uh, what if we just gave them half of what we give the fire companies?
And they, and they can have half a banquet, right?
Well, they, 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 their banquets generally are a little more expensive.
I know, I've been there.
Or, I mean, I don't, I don't mind if, if they understand it is when we give the, uh, the larger donation that includes their banquet. I didn't want them to feel like they're taking money we give them and they're using it for a banquet without us specifically acknowledging that.
Well, the other thing to look at is, we give keys to both fire companies.
Yeah.
When they need fuel, diesel fuel, they bring the trucks here and fill up. They don't find no fuel. The ambulance association asks if they can come here and fill theirs. No, 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 not overrunning they do. You know, we're not responsible for that.
They travel so far outside the township, the fire companies are.
Right.
Yeah.
Except when they go to Braid or some special.
That's true, yes, but that's not.
And the ambulance is running all the time. So it's just, and if you give it to them, you know, it's not that much money, or, you know, you would have been at. Or, you know, you're looking at, but...
Well, it's, it's basically for every hour they spend raising money, they're not spending an hour training or, you know, with their family. They're, they're raising money for, because our constitution is, is, I think I figured about a third of their annual costs. So they're getting another third in rentals and, and stuff that they do charge, plus then they have to grow and raise funds. Like I, I'm, the latest report from...
Are you talking to the fire company?
Fire company, uh, talking to the fire companies. The latest report was when they send out the, the fund drives. Five Pointville only got about, was it 35% response, meaning that 65% didn't contribute. So, um, okay.
Whatever you do.
What are you thinking, Dave?
I, the yard point, with the ambulance, they'll, they'll charge you if you're not a member, so they either force you to pay one way or another. But it is an appreciation thing. It's not...
Well, we already give them $15,000 that we wouldn't have to give.
This is more like sending a Christmas card than, 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 you know, helping them. Know what I mean? It is not... It's just an appreciation gift is the way I would see it. I think they should...
You say if you're not a member...
They just charge you, yeah.
If, if you're a member...
If you're not a member...
But if you are a member, you have insurance. Your insurance will pay.
Well, your insurance will pay for it regardless if you're a member or not, but if you're not a member...
But they, they charge for every run they take.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, now, okay, so when you're a member, they don't charge you.
Right. They don't charge you insurance company.
Like say your insurance company doesn't pay the entire bill.
No.
They don't charge you the rest. If you are not a member and you do not have insurance, you don't get a bill.
Yeah, a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Depends where you go.
Well, I, I, I like Dave's comparison though. It is just kind of like a, a Christmas card here. Appreciate it. Let us just cover a little bit of your...
I appreciate that. They're serving as much as the fire company, you know, if you want to fill your appreciation forms. The donation end of it's, it's different. I don't think they should get what the fire company do. But I don't see this as a donation as much as just an appreciation gift.
And I'm not gonna ignore your point. It's just, you know, we're already giving them money that we wouldn't have to. And we need them.
Cause you need them and I appreciate them. And when you hear the number of hours they've put in, they practically live there.
I know something. You must say they did live there.
Well, let me try this. Let's, let's, I'll make a motion that we give $1,000 to the Five Pointville and the Oakland Fire Company to be designated as, to partner with them in, with their membership appreciation banquet. And that we would give $500 to the Five Pointville Ambulance with the same condition as for, um, the use for their, um, membership banquet.
That would be more fitting according to the amount of money we're donating.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, motion was made in second. Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the 856.
Yeah, I wish that was for him.
So motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn the township meeting at 8:56. Did you sign it?
Yeah, he did. No, I'll, I'll give it to him. Here, can you sign this? We're recording the... Yeah, if you don't mind. I, I don't mind.
Did you adjourn the motion?
Yeah, yeah.